Recording in progress.
February 18, 2025 council meeting. At this time, I will ask for our city clerk to call. Roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It'll be just one moment. I'm waiting for confirmation of our stream. Okay, we are confirmed. Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Ania.
Yes.
Tillman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan.
Here.
Mayor Trupiana.
I'm here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. And I think we're going to go and do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll take public comment on our closed session item. Okay? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And before we go into closed session, I will take public comment on our closed session agenda items. Is that correct? Is there anyone who wishes to speak about our closed session item? No?
Mayor, it looks like item three is on non-agenda items, just generic public comment. And then we'll have public comment on...
We just... We... I'm sorry. We were going to switch the order just in case there's anyone. And then I'm going to come back and do public comment on non-agenda items after we come back from closed session. Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Sorry. I meant to say I changed the order. Any... Anyone else? No? Okay. So at this time, we are going into closed session. And that means we'll have to temporarily say goodbye to you, and we'll let you know as soon as we're out of closed session. Thank you, Larry. Okay. Welcome back. We are now coming back from closed session, and there are no reportable items to report. Thank you. And we're going to go into our regular council meeting agenda now. And we will be accepting public comment on non-agenda items. And Larry, I believe you are up. Non-agenda, correct?
Yes, non-agenda.
Okay. Go right ahead. You have three minutes.
We're go. Two weeks ago, a gentleman stood up here and said, "Employee turnover. Nobody cares." I stand before you tonight. I care. And I've also spoke to a number of other residents of Clayton. They care also. So that statement, employee turnover, nobody cares, is an inaccurate statement. So it begs the question now, what else did that gentleman say in his commentary that is also inaccurate? I want you to think about that for a minute. If you did it once, how do you know you didn't do it again? Right? Think about that. And why does employee turnover matter? There are two costs associated with turning over an employee. You have direct tangible hard costs such as recruiting fees, medical tests, training costs, advertising. Another group, indirectible, intangible, or soft costs, lost productivity, safety risks, loss of knowledge, and time to conduct an interview. Now, it is estimated that it costs anywhere from 50% to 200% of the annual salary every time you turn a rollover. That's a lot of money, considering we've had, what? Eight city managers, seven finance managers, five community development directors, and now a police chief. And just a quick little calculation, and I'm very willing to support all this stuff, that's cost this city in excess of $1 million. And if anybody thinks that $1 million is not a lot of money, that is a lot of money. And we can't afford to have this kind of turnover in our city. I would ask that we need to look into or conduct root cause analysis as to why we've experienced this amount of turnover. That is unacceptable for the reasons exactly pointed out. It's a financial cost to this city in excess of $1 million. Okay? I leave you with one thing before I finish. Truth does not mind being questioned. A lie does not like being challenged. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNeil, is there anyone else who wants to speak on non-agenda items? Yes? Please approach the podium. And you will have three minutes.
Ah, okay. Thank you. I'm not sure if this is an agenda item because it's regarding the annual geological and geotechnical site reconnaissance.
Which we're going to talk about at around 7:30 this evening.
Okay.
So if you don't mind waiting until then...
I can do that. Thank you.
That would be great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to close. Oh, one more. Go ahead, Mr. Denso.
All right. Thank you for your time, guys. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. So I just wanted to briefly address the comments made by Dan and Connie Horton. She claimed there are those who made loud and outrageous comments to stir people up who otherwise want to remain civil. Those were her exact words. In my absence, she mischaracterized a threatening situation here at City Hall recently. Most of us here witnessed it because we're the ones that typically show up, so we all know what happened. We all know Gary Hood's stature and size, and we all know mine, and we all know who threatened to take me outside and pound me into the ground. Many of the silent people who don't want to be stirred up that Connie mentioned have come to me and asked me to speak on their behalf tonight because they don't feel safe in their own town. I want to quote Connie again here because she said that this kind of threatening behavior cannot be tolerated. I couldn't agree more. I find it interesting that she and others have insinuated that more bullying takes place over Zoom, though. One resident provoked a fistfight just here a few years ago in these very chambers, and some in this town, including Mr. Hood, regularly intimidate myself, Mr. McNeil over there, and others in person. So I appreciate your claims of Zoom bullying. There's nothing that we can seemingly do about it because you three are so adamant about your accusations, but history does not belie them. So back to last meeting. Connie's husband, Dane, then turned his attention to the Black Lives Matter movement, comparing them to thugs. He talked about our, quote, "sweet, friendly, and welcoming" city. At the same time, him and Connie were offering new flags to the city only to put up Blue Lives Matter flags, and of course, were subsequently told to take them down as the city did not like being tricked by the Hortons yet again. Then he quoted another resident by saying that we did not want to turn into the gay Mecca, his words, and cannot tolerate intolerable behavior. I don't know what this intolerable behavior is, but then he subsequently talked about how we can no longer fly the progress flag in the month of June because it's a political flag. So let's revisit his wife's comments about how there are folks in town that want to make loud and outrageous comments so as to stir people up who would otherwise remain civil. This is called projection, guys. You accuse people what you're guilty of and hope that it sticks. But I agree with you, Connie Horton. These types of loud and outrageous behaviors, in order to stir people up, really need to go away. The bullying really needs to go away. These three over here won't let the public speak virtually because they say the bullying takes place more over Zoom, but history doesn't actually show that. The bullying takes place here. Now, I was going to say some of the bullies are here right now. They typically are. They're not tonight, but we know who they are. That can make others in town afraid to speak up. It doesn't make me afraid. It makes me want to protect others in town who might feel afraid. So if anything happens, ever happens to me because of it, you know exactly where to look. And there's just nothing about that that adheres to the Do the Right Thing campaign, is there, guys?
Thank you, Mr. Denso.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, then I'm going to close public comment. And we're going to move on to item number five now, which is our consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council who would like to... Councilmember Diaz? Go right ahead.
I would like to pull item 5B.
5B, and...
And I would like to pull 5C. I just have a couple of questions.
5C. Anyone else? Okay. So let's talk about...
I would like to hear from city staff. This is... And I've received at least one or two emails. Some came in from the public through the city clerk's office. And I'd like to hear a little bit more about what's being proposed here and if there is a potential to modify that. Thank you.
So yes, this predates my start here of negotiating this with Oakhurst Country Club. We've been back and forth a number of times. And this was the latest iteration that we could agree on. There were some complaints that have been made about the noise and lighting from maintenance equipment early in the morning. The previous agreement expired, and nothing was put in its place. So at this time, that's why it's coming back to the council for this version. In talking to the employees from Oakhurst, the owners, actually, there's a set schedule of how they go about maintaining prior to tee off on number one and subsequently maintenance trying to stay ahead of the golfers going out on the course. At first light typically, pushing back maintenance, according to them, will push back their tee times, could do business harm. If people can't tee off until 8 o'clock, when they could tee off, say it, 6:30, do they keep their membership because they're first light golfers? Those are questions. So those are some of their concerns. I believe Oakhurst has a representative here this evening. Yes? Yeah. Noreen, right? So if there's specific questions in regards to maintenance, they're here to answer those questions. But that's how we came to this resolution to... The agreement was hole number one to start at 5:30 in the morning. And after numerous conversations, they were able to move it to 6 o'clock. That would create some additional time on maintenance because they'll start at a different hole, come back to one, and then move forward at that time. So it throws a little bit of a wrench into the maintenance on a daily basis, but they were willing to do that.
Throughout the golf course, what's the general maintenance time that starts? Is that at 5:30, 6 o'clock, 6:30 throughout? Because it appears that, as you're outlining here, hole number one is the one that's creating the question or the issue.
So the holes have different start times for maintenance. This agreement, holes number two, 16, 17, and 18, no earlier than 5:30 a.m., those are holes that do not have residences. Right. Hole number one would be at 6 a.m. Holes three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, no earlier than 7 a.m.
Because those do have residence.
Those do have residence. Correct. Yes.
Any other questions for Chris? Go ahead.
No. I'm thankful he has explained it a little more clearly. And if appropriate, it'd be nice to hear from the Oakhurst people as well on this and see what is really what's pushing this. I know, for example, that when we pick up trash, the starting time is 7 a.m. And my particular residence is right at the beginning. In fact, sometimes they're out there 10 minutes to 7:00. It doesn't bother me, but I know some residents are a little concerned about this. And I... We've gotten a number of pieces of correspondence on this. And I'd just like to hear a little bit more from the leadership and see what can we do to adjust this, to fine tune it a little bit better.
Noreen, would you be willing to come up to the podium? Noreen is the general manager, correct?
Correct.
And just press the button. Yeah. So we can hear your microphone.
Perfect. Good evening. I'm Noreen Rogland. I'm the general manager over at Oakhurst Country Club. I've been there for 12, 13, 14 months now. And we have been going back and forth on this issue with the previous city manager and now with Chris, too. So appreciate the time. Putting this back and putting it forward. Our first tee time at the country club right now is at 7 a.m. And in order for that tee time to begin, we need to start our practices, our maintenance practices, with mowing and rolling the golf course. So what we do is we do start on certain holes to avoid that noise from residents. So again, starting on number... Certain holes and going up closer to the hill. I believe it is two, 16, 17, 18. Yeah. So we start on those holes, which are furthest away, starting, I believe, at 7... At 5:30 in the morning. And then at 7 o'clock, you know, or at certain times, like at 6 o'clock, I mean, sorry, at 7 o'clock, then we go ahead and start on the resident side. And those, you know, we do have golfers that end up catching up because, you know, we tee off on number one, and then we can't hit some certain residents, like in four, until a certain time. So we've been training our staff to make sure that they cannot go before, any time before 7 o'clock. So they will sit and wait until that 7 o'clock.
And that's starting on hole number one?
That one would be on four. Four.
Four. Okay. Yeah, because that one, I'm trying to recall the layout. And I know we have a couple of the residents here that have written us. And I'd like to hear from them as well so that you could hear what the public are telling us. Unless we've provided them with the correspondence that we have received at City Hall. I don't know if you've gotten any.
I've only received one of the correspondences.
Okay.
I haven't received any other ones.
And Noreen, I have a quick question for you, a question that I asked last week, but if you could answer it publicly. Is there any possibility of starting maintenance on hole one, which seems to be the one in question here, starting it later in the day or at the very end of the day, like finishing with that hole? Is that a possibility?
Unfortunately, it wouldn't be a possibility because of the start time, because of our start time on number one. So again, our tee times begin at 1 o'clock. I mean, at 7 o'clock in the morning.
Okay. But you couldn't finish with that hole so that it's ready for the next morning?
Unfortunately, not.
Okay.
So are you asking in the evening? Like finish in the evening as they're closing up? Could they do one so that it's done in the morning?
Yeah. Ready to go the next morning. So what do you do for hole one? What is done every day on hole one? You don't mow it every day.
So we don't mow, but we also mow and roll every day. So roll our greens every day.
What is that? Roll?
So we roll our greens every day. And then mowing, it just kind of depends on the schedule. So that schedule is usually a mow or a roll. So the louder noise comes from the mowing. So just kind of depending on, you know, what the practice is for that day.
So why can't you do that at 1 or 2 in the afternoon? The last golfer is done with hole one by then because you have four or five hours to golf, right?
Correct.
What time do you start the last golfer?
We have tee times that go all the way up until 5 o'clock in the afternoon.
It gets dark 30 minutes later.
So, yes, and our tee times still go up until 5 o'clock in the afternoon. Right now, we go...
So how do they play those holes in the dark?
You don't need to finish.
Yeah, you don't have to finish the hole. They can play one, go up to 16, 17, 18. They could play those holes or, you know, it's one, two, or three, just kind of depending on how much daylight they get. So right now, if they tee off at 5:00 and they can't see their golf ball until 6:00 or 6:30, then they'll stop and they'll...
Okay. The mowers, when are you going to electric?
So right now, the... We don't have electric right now. And honestly, they're just not available in the market. We did purchase two new mowers this past year, and we're not using gas. Actually, you can't buy any even gas blowers in California right now. So that's one of the practices, is that everything is moving to electric, especially with the electric blowers. You know, that is something that, you know, we are, we're looking into. But right now, like with availability for electric, it's probably not in the near future.
For how long?
You know, I'm not, I'm not really sure. But that's...
You know, I checked today with Round Hill Country Club at Alamo. They have electric mowers.
So those are, like those robotic Husvarna mowers. So those are...
Go ahead.
So those are power mowers, like solar mowers.
Okay.
And that are not man. But right now, that, we're not looking into purchasing any electric mowers right now.
Also, also, when this first agreement was done, I know it expired, but the city council in 2000, which was 25 years ago, they specifically exempted the golf course from obeying the law, that they can't start anything before 7 a.m. No landscaper in town can start before 7:00 because it's noise. They specifically let the golf course do it at 6:00, and they didn't do that. And we may have to look at that again. That's a special privilege, and you have houses next to you across the street. It doesn't seem right. And when you build those condos where the practice green is, how far is that from hole one? 50 feet? 20 feet?
The practice green?
You have a practice green, right, that you're going to convert it to condos?
That practice green is up at the clubhouse. That's not close. That's not close to... That's...
I think you're referring to the driving range.
The driving range. Where's that?
So the driving range is right along number one.
Right. That's what I'm referring to. That's where there's going to be condos. I don't know if you know that, but the owners told me. And you're going to have condos right next to hole one.
So I believe that is... I don't know specifically, but I believe that's on the other side of the street.
I'm not a golfer, so I don't know where the driving range is. But, but anyway.
I don't... The specific of the condos on the golf course?
Yes. That's why the members are all upset. Am I correct or am I wrong?
So...
Sort of. I would say as part of the housing element, we considered, at the request of Oakhurst ownership, to include four sections of four different parcels that currently make up the driving range. I'm not sure. I don't think that there's any plans currently.
No, there's no plan on paper yet.
But I think it was contemplated that a portion of those could be converted. But that is an ideation, not necessarily anything that's been put to paper.
Yep.
So what about making hole one off limits when you're generally done from an 18-hole day? Is that about 1 or 2 o'clock in the afternoon?
Again, that is disrupting play. So we would have to shut our golf... Shut number one down for a certain amount of time to get that completed.
I was thinking about the ones that only play three or four holes.
I don't believe we would be able to do that.
Okay. All right. And how late do your employees work that work the greens, the maintenance?
So they are done at 1:30.
What time?
1:30 in the afternoon.
So you'd have to keep one a little longer or adjust the hours if you were to do some work on number one later in the day?
Correct.
So if a resolution went back to being 7 a.m., you'd have to start somebody later?
So we would have to move our tee times back to 9 a.m.
Okay.
Councilmember Tillman? Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. Your last comment about moving the tee times back to 9 a.m., when did they get moved up to 6 a.m.?
6 a.m.? Our tee times start at 7.
I mean, 7. I meant 7.
Our tee times have always been starting at 7 o'clock.
So you just mentioned that we would have to move our tee times back to 9 a.m.
Just because of how the practice goes with mowing and bringing, you know, the equipment back around and taking the time to do that.
So was there a point in time when that was happening?
Not, not from my understanding, no.
Okay. So when you were saying you would have to move it back, you weren't meaning...
Our tee times would...
You would have to move it?
Correct.
Stop. Not move it back as in it was happening before?
It was not happening.
That was my misunderstanding. Okay. That's why I kept asking, when were you doing it?
Oh, got it. Yes. Sorry about that.
It's okay. That was my misunderstanding. And then I know that in some of the correspondence that we receive from some of the residents, they mention that this seems to have the light shining earlier in the morning into their homes. It seems to be a new occurrence. And I'm trying to figure out, has something changed in the last 12 to 18 months that you guys are doing at hole one?
So I believe that instance, I wanted to say it happened last summer.
Okay.
And that was just one of our maintenance crews not understanding of where to go. So that was just a misunderstanding of an associate.
So it only happened one time?
It happened one time. And that was corrected.
Yeah.
That was my only question.
Mr. Miller, you'll get a chance.
Okay.
We're still asking Noreen some questions. Councilmember Tillman?
I think those were my only questions as I really wanted to understand the timeframe on when this was occurring.
Right. And kind of when things changed and when they started. Vice Mayor Juan, did you have some questions?
I just wanted to clarify. You had mentioned that move back... I understood move back like move back in sequence, not move back to something that already existed. But the start time would then moved from currently 7 to 9? Or 7 to 8?
It would. If that were to happen, our tee times probably would need to move back a start time. So right now, we're currently starting tee off. First tee time is at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Right? And then if we were to change our practices, we're probably looking about 8:30, probably 9 o'clock.
And that's not necessarily just because of hole one? It's because all the other holes would be impacted as well?
Correct. With our current maintenance equipment that we have, yes.
I see. Okay. How, how... What's the time between your starts? Is it... Do you do 10-minute cycles?
We do 10-minute tee time intervals.
Okay. So if you push them back two hours... Okay. I'm just doing some math in my head.
No. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I mean, sorry. If you're doing, if you're doing 10 minutes, you're doing six starts, 12 starts, four players. You're talking 48 members.
And our tee sheets in the morning are... Yeah.
They're full.
Are busiest in the mornings.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Diaz?
I know nothing about golf course maintenance. My question is, do you have to do this maintenance every day?
Yes.
You can't be staggered?
No.
Really?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm digest, digesting.
I think the course, the course quality would suffer if you do not do the appropriate level of maintenance. I do golf. Um, I've golfed.
Oh, I know you do.
Oakhurst many times, um, and it does make a difference on the course.
Okay, so you have to do it every day?
Yes.
Monday through Sunday?
If you want to maintain the facility at the level that the members expect, then yes.
Yeah. Okay.
That Councilmember Tillman, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to revisit what we were kind of asking at the very beginning. And so is the reason why you could not mow or, and or roll hole one is because, or course one, because the maintenance staff have left at one-thirty in the afternoon, so it couldn't be done in the evening after the last tee time at five PM is completed on that hole, you couldn't then start mowing it and rolling it?
Unfortunately, not.
And is it because of staffing?
It's staffing, equipment, um, inconveniencing our membership.
I guess that's a part I'm missing. How is it an inconvenience to membership if they've already played through?
So we have tee times that go throughout, throughout the day.
No, I understand. So I'm saying if your last tee time is at five PM.
Mm-hmm.
Let's assume that they start off at hole one.
Everybody starts on one.
Okay. And.
Well, yeah.
Let's assume that the five PM.
In theory.
People start at, start at hole one, and then they're done and they move to the next hole, and no one else is coming through because they're all done. There's no one else coming through on hole one. Why couldn't it be mowed or rolled then?
So it's, one, I would say it's more consistency throughout the course of play, right? So if we are mowing or rolling, or rolling greens, we kind of keep everything at a consistent level, time of day, growth, all of that. There's, there's some things, other things that we do on the golf course, and we just get ready for, for play in the morning. There's no practices at other facilities or at other golf courses that do it, mow the best times, you know? When you mow or roll, the best times are to do it in the morning where we are, have the heaviest of play. So we want to make sure that the golf course is at a playable and presentable um condition. And that's not going to happen at five o'clock in the afternoon where the members are not going to get the best benefit out of the course play.
And so there could be some, something that occurred from five PM, or call it six PM even, to the next morning when you tee off at seven?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I had a question. You're closed on Mondays.
Yes.
So why do hole one first on Mondays? There's nobody there. Why can't you do hole one later in the morning on Mondays?
So it has to, it's a practice that has to happen every single day. It's not just on a Monday.
Okay. I guess that answers that question. So the only way that it could be changed by our city council if we wanted is to get rid of the special exception that the golf course has to start at six AM and go back to the law that we have in the city for everybody else to start noise at seven. That's the only way you'd go back to seven o'clock.
Well, and don't forget, some holes are at five-thirty.
Well, they'd all have to stop until seven AM.
Right.
Because there's no noise allowed in this city before seven, like equipment and things like that. Nobody else could start work with noise.
Understood.
Yep. That's a city law, and it's enforced by the county district attorney. Okay, thank you. I was just wondering.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? City manager, Chris, do you want to add anything? Okay. So I guess we need to decide, are we?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, right, yeah, public comment, sorry. And I do have, do you have more than one?
There's the door.
Also. Okay. First on the list is Brian Weisendanger, and you will have three minutes. Yeah, press the red button.
Got it.
There you go.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you for hearing me. Uh, I am speaking to exactly the same thing that you just spoke to. Um, we do live across the street from hole number one. I gave a map to attach. Um, you'll see that the area where, where I've got an X is blank. This map is a city map. It's actually available on their website, which I was told to ask. Um, and it is actually dated from two thousand. This is when the original agreement was made, and our neighborhood did not exist at that time. Our neighborhood was built in two thousand, so it now exists. We were never included in any survey in the beginning because we didn't exist. We haven't been included in any survey since that time. I do have to say, we have never had a real complaint about the golf course. Um, there is noise occasionally, but until January of twenty-twenty-four, when apparently the new owners took over, that's when this all started. And ever since then, we have been woken up at various times, starting sometimes as early as four-forty-five in the morning. People using wood chippers on the course as well as weed whackers. In fact, just last weekend, they used weed whackers on hole number one along the path, uh, again, six o'clock in the morning. It's been a continual problem for the last year, and as you're well aware, we've been working with staff, and we have been consistently uh sending emails once a week with all of our various things that we see. We always listen, if we hear it, then we get up and we confirm that they're out there. We can clearly see the light shining in our windows. We can clearly hear them when they're across the street because it's like fifty feet away from us. Our second floor bedroom, which is where our master is, as well as the rest of the bedrooms in our house, are all at the same elevation as the first hole. So you can see if they come driving down that path to start their work, as well as the work that they're doing, they're right there. We have made complaints in the past to the golf course. One of the things I'm going to request is that you guys have some in your agreement, something that says who we contact, and they have a number that is in there permanently because we got the runaround, the, the times we have tried to call. It's taken us days to get ahold of someone. Once we do get ahold of someone, um, last time we had to ask specifically for the greens' keeper because nobody else would return our call, we couldn't get a live person, and at that particular time, he's, he told us, no, we don't start till five-thirty. You couldn't possibly have had someone out there beforehand. Um, we would like to be included as a hole that is adjacent, therefore we can get a survey in the future, therefore they can't start till seven. And on weekends, in the last agreement, which apparently is now gone, they said at that time that it would be seven o'clock on weekdays, eight o'clock on the weekends. That's gone. That's not in this agreement. So uh, I think my wife's going to have some follow-up, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Pamela?
Find my page real quick. Um, I'm Pamela Weisendanger. Uh, my husband and I have lived in Clayton almost twenty-four years now, always in the same home, directly across from the first hole of the golf course. And I must tell you, um, you got my letter with more detail, but I just want to reiterate. The first hole of the golf course is indeed adjacent to residences, our neighborhood, and as such, it should be in the same category as the other holes in the agreement, considered adjacent to residences, and therefore no noise before seven AM or after eight PM. For over two decades, it has not been an issue. It was only, as Brian said, in the last year that the noise got earlier, louder, and more frequent. Uh, I really, in over twenty years, can't recall anything waking us up until the beginning of last year. As Brian said, there's been weed eaters, mowers, aerators, wood chippers, and chainsaws. And prior to emailing the city council every week, one of us will get up and confirm, indeed, it is golf course maintenance that's making the noise, not road noise. So we're not asking for anything that didn't already exist peacefully for over two decades, and that is that the golf course do their maintenance during business hours according to the existing city noise ordinance, which nothing but were seven AM, nothing after eight PM. Um, that's, that's not impossible. We're, as I said, we're not asking for something that didn't already exist. So we, we look forward to your support on getting that change made in the agreement without further concession, taking something away that was already acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I apologize. Glenn Miller, live above the seventeenth. Uh, it's a canyon, but we, we can hear it. Um, we, uh, I guess my wi- my wife and I have made concessions recently that, okay, six o'clock's fine, but they pushed it. They, they, they come up there at five o'clock, and um Ms. Tillman pointed out, it's also the lights. I mean, they're flying around, and I just anecdotally had a, had an incident where I ran into their new maintenance supervisor who basically told me, the hell with you guys, that's what, what do you expect living up, uh, above, uh, I said, well, you got to follow the rules. And then I suggested that they might want to do some different improvements, and he said, the heck, I don't give a, you know what? Um, so that late, you might want to look into that guy's attitude, uh, number one. And number two, um, I don't mind, you know, the seventeenth's kind of off, away from these guys. Um, they want to come at six, six-thirty. I'd, I'd rather have it be six-thirty, but, you know, they can, they can push it there. Um, my dog gets up and, you know, he, he's a husky and he can hear stuff I can't hear. And uh, so, but they, they do push it. They, they push it to five. I, I can, I can vouch for that. They do push it. They push it pretty, pretty hard, and it's been recent that they've really been pushing it hard. So just, just to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this agenda item? Okay, let's bring it back to council. So.
Can I?
Go ahead.
There's a couple of things that were prompted. Can we confirm, what were the terms of the now expired agreement? Or actually, maybe a better question would be, what has, what has materially changed from the proposed agreement here to the one that was priorly expired?
I don't have the prior agreement. I have what was originally, I think, proposed by the interim city manager.
Okay.
I have the prior, would you like to look at it?
How long, how long is it? How fast can I read?
It's at seven AM.
Let me see.
It's dated in nineteen ninety-seven. Oh, yeah, two thousand, so January of two thousand. It's twenty-five years old.
Two thousand, okay.
There's also the resolution there to exempt them, make them always. And there's also a resolution.
It's also, there's also a resolution there by the city council in two thousand to exempt only the golf course from noise before seven AM.
So the agreement was to start at seven AM, but there's an exception to start before seven AM?
The city council passed a special resolution.
Microphone.
Passed a special resolution in January of two thousand to exempt the city ordinance that says you can start at seven. They exempted it, so it doesn't apply.
That's the case. Why would they?
And that is what our former community development director told me when we first started receiving complaints, that there was a separate agreement, I didn't even know that until um that exempted the golf course from our regular noise order, ordinance.
No, that, that makes sense, but what I'm saying is, if the agreement says you can't start before seven, why is there an exemption?
No, that you could. Right.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
So it's written in there, and apparently the, the golf course people wanted it early, so they passed a resolution, but they left the seven o'clock time in the agreement. I don't know what supersedes each, each one of those.
Good question.
I don't.
Questions?
Okay. Other, um, I can't digest all this, I don't even read that fast.
So should we pull it?
Well, can I, can I ask? Has Oakhurst, if this was executed in around the twenty-twenty timeframe, are we aware if Oakhurst ever operated without some kind of noise abatement agreement? I don't remember the inception of the, of the club. I, I wasn't here, so I don't know. How, how long has it been in place?
The noise, the noise exemption has been there since two thousand.
This, this looks like it was operated at least from two thousand. I don't know the inception of the club, and my question is, are we aware if the club ever operated without a noise abatement prior to this execution?
Prior to two thousand?
Yeah.
I moved here in oh-three.
And Oakhurst was here already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess that, yeah, what I was thinking is that essentially, like, if they've been doing this maintenance, I'm trying to assess what level of change this represents, or if this is the status quo. So it's hard, it's hard to tell.
I think the level of change is they built this new section that across hole number one. It wasn't there until.
But Oakhurst was there first?
Oakhurst was there first.
You're talking about the residential development?
Yeah, where the fire department is. That development was built.
Yeah, in, in two thousand.
Yes.
So the, the golf course was already extant at the time?
Yes, it was here.
Right.
So.
Okay, so are we going to pull this item or?
I would like to hold it. I think there needs to be more work done on this.
Yeah, it, it's clear we need, in my, in my opinion, that we need to do some additional uh review and discussion and come up with some potential options. I, I don't know what they are sitting here right now, but it's clear uh that something changed uh within the past year.
January.
That's what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm.
What happened?
City manager, Chris?
Um, do you have recommendations for the agreement? It sounds like the contentious hole at this point is hole number one. Is there something you would like me to go back and negotiate a time for this agreement? If everything else in the agreement is acceptable with the exception of number one, I would really like to just focus on number one, and what does that time look like so that I can go back and see what we can, we can do?
That's what it sounds like, is that the, the issue is hole number one, and I don't know.
Right.
Mayor, what you want to do, but uh we need to allow the city manager to go back and, and begin another review or discussion on it.
Well, and again, what I asked last week was, and Noreen, I know you said this is not possible, but to finish with hole one, at the end of the day, I've plenty of time seen the maintenance crew working while people are golfing, because I live on fifteen. They're mowing, they're blowing, they're doing all kinds of things while people are golfing, so I think that can be done.
So, Noreen, correct me if I'm misstating this. So if you do hole number one, let's say at one o'clock at the end of the day, you still have golfers coming through on number one, okay? And in the summertime, they could be teeing off as late as six, seven, even eight o'clock to play just four holes and go home. So what happens is those golfers come through, they don't reset the tee box, so now you have divots on the tee box that you're hitting from. The green has been walked on by how many golfers? You don't have a flat surface to putt on because that's why they roll it in the morning before the first golfers get out. That's the best, that's the prime time to golf because that's the most pristine. Did I capture that accurately?
On those lines, if you do it in the evening, the first golfer's in the morning, it's untouched, and the work maintenance crew can drive by there before then and see if there's anything that needs to be touched up before the first golfers start. You know, the fourteen months that this started, I can pinpoint it. It's when Truun took over the golf course, it's been about fourteen months, right?
True.
And you brought, they brought their maintenance crew with them, and they're a very good company. They are known for their golf courses. And let me tell you, I've looked here for years, the golf courses never looked better, one hundred percent better. But I don't know if I want that at the expense of residents here, because you have to be a good neighbor. And they're a management company. They can be gone tomorrow. So, I think we should hold it and try to come up with a resolution.
I mean, I...
And, go ahead.
I would just say, if the club has been operating a certain way with the level of expectation from its members, if we do something that impacts the club significantly, it has a pretty detrimental impact on the club itself. And given that they're one of the largest, you know, businesses in town, I think we should be really careful about the actions we take if it impacts the overall health of the club. I mean, I think they're, these, I mean, what we're, I don't know, I think you've mentioned you're not a golfer.
I'm not a golfer.
And it's hard to contextualize the impact on play if you don't actually play, but, you know, I think at the level of clientele that the club caters to, if it's not maintained in the way that's expected, I think you would definitely see an impact. And so, I just want to make sure that we're balancing all the interested parties, because it does make a difference, so.
I agree with you, it does, because I've seen the golf course for years in terrible shape, and I'm sure they lost members. But I don't know how ten or eleven hours is going to degrade it. I just don't know that. It's only ten or eleven hours difference. I don't understand how it would degrade it.
Because what it's, I mean, yeah, that's right. I don't know. I think what it sounds like is if it was actually, I think some of the residents that mentioned, if they were actually doing the hours of operation that were claimed, then I think many people wouldn't have a challenge. So, that to me is the thing. It's not necessarily setting a different time that's untenable for the operations of the club, but it's more like making sure that we adhere to the terms of the actual agreement, right? That's what it sounds like. And I don't, so I can't speak to the specifics of when the crews go out, because I don't live there, but that, to me, seems like the biggest point of contention is when they're actually going out. Because if they're coming, if the time says five-thirty, and if, Mr. Miller, I believe you live somewhere on Peacock? Seventeen is across the gorge, or across the, whatever it's called?
And it's up a canyon.
Canyon?
Which actually couldn't be an actual end to program.
I'm sure it could, but if the time is five-thirty, and it actually starts at five-thirty, I don't think that that is as objectionable as when it's, if it starts at four-thirty.
Only if you don't blow the Peacock Bridge.
True.
Okay. Yeah. Rather than, yeah, have a conversation back and forth.
But I think adhering to the actual terms is probably, or potentially not adhering, is probably what's causing most of the consternation. That's what it seems like.
So, but adhering to the actual terms is still six AM for hole number one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a lot for the six AM.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks, Glenn.
Hang on, yeah, thank you.
May I ask a quick question of staff?
Chris?
I just have a quick question. Why did we move up thirty minutes from the January twenty-first meeting to this meeting?
I was just commenting that the wrong one is in the packet.
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand why we went from six AM, excuse me, so just a month ago, we had holes one, two, three, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, no earlier than six AM, and thereafter, maintenance work will be performed on holes three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen inclusive, no earlier than seven AM, et cetera. Why did we move those holes up to five-thirty AM? Now, I'm trying to switch back to the other screen, hold on. To five-thirty AM, hole one, no earlier than six, and then all of those other holes are seven?
The wrong agreement's in the packet.
Then we need to pull this.
Okay, then we need to pull it.
The one from, that I was just previously commenting, is that the one from January Seventeenth is the correct version, which has the six AM start. That's what it should be. But if six AM is too early, then I think we're looking from direction from council.
Yeah, the six AM still applies to hole number one. So, yeah, we can update that version, but the question still remains with one and what the council would like to do with that.
So, there is no five-thirty AM start for any hole? Okay, let me go back to the January one.
So, it's six and seven AM, and six AM on hole one?
There's other edits, too. I think it's just the wrong version that is in the packet.
Okay, so, shall we pull it?
When you bring that back to talk to them, could you ask if it takes a whole hour to do that hole? Maybe it just takes thirty minutes, and they could start at six-thirty and finish by seven. I'd go with that. I would go with that.
Yeah, I'll talk to him. Okay, definitely.
Okay. Do you have enough direction from us? Okay.
Well, I want to be sure. I don't know what we're doing. So, are we asking, are we asking him to go back and keep two, three, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, six o'clock, and one, six-thirty, and then the other seven? Is that what we're asking him to do?
That's the starting point.
Okay. Are we all okay with that?
I think we're all okay with that. Six-thirty on one.
And the list stays?
Yeah. Stays with the January Seventeenth version?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need a motion? No, okay. Anything else? Thank you, okay. We are now going to move on to, thank you for your comments this evening, we're moving on to five C.
I can't remember what mine were now.
What's that?
The other remaining items in there?
We're still on five C. We're still on five C. Councilmember Tillman wants to pull five C.
Yes, please. So, my question for staff is, the twenty-nine dollars, oh, hi Larry, the twenty-nine dollars per parcel, and I know I ask this question every year, I know it hasn't been increased. I read through the packet, the rationale on why, but what recourse do we have to ever get it fixed, other than it might not pass a threshold of increasing it if we know that it's at a deficit?
Essentially, you need to go out for another vote, which the county as a whole has done that process, I think, twelve years ago now, and it didn't pass. So, the county, along with many of the elected officials, have been looking at what's the next best opportunity to go back to the voters and, you know, frankly, figure out an appropriate strategy to try to make, get a passage of an increase. Right now, I believe there isn't anything scheduled in the horizon to increase this rate. The, I think, you know, without doing an actual vote among the agencies, I think the consensus is that there's a lot of other things, there's not too many strong supporters that, or folks that feel that it will pass anything differently than it was twelve years ago. So, at this time, it's going to be at this rate, and it's a dwindling, well, it's a static resource for the community, and it's pretty much every community in Contra Costa is tapped out. You know, they've hit their maximum, so Clayton is by no means the only one. So, it does require a, essentially, a vote of countywide, along with, you know, it would then involve each city at a certain apportionment. So, the rate is different in certain cities. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah. We know it's a county-wide thing, but it just seems...
The city could go on its own.
I wish these microphones tonight.
I apologize.
I was saying that it just, I know that it's a county-wide issue, and that it'd have to go back out to the voters, but it just seems odd to me that we know that it's not bringing in enough revenue, and we just, I know we have to pass it, otherwise we lose it, but it just, I wish we had some recourse that we could...
Yeah, in order to continue it, yes, you have to do this every year, obviously. Many of you have done this multiple times. It doesn't have to be a county vote, but because the way the Contra Costa has situated itself, it approaches it as a collective. I'm aware that, like, city of San Mateo, not the county, they did their own specific one, which then they reap, obviously, those costs, or the tax for themselves, which is not really different than what this is, but it just goes through the county, because it's being collected at a county level. But the city could go separately if it didn't want to go with the rest of the county at the same time. So, it is a possibility. But I don't believe any city's expressed desire to go on their own, like city of San Mateo at this point, because I don't think there's probably any different. There may be a few communities that are certainly more inclined to tax themselves more than others, but I don't think any city has taken that approach yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
You know, you're talking about San Mateo City. It reminded me, in nineteen eighty-three, when I was a Belmont police officer, that was the big giant rainstorm of that year. It flooded a lot of stuff, including Belmont. They put up that stormwater bond on their own, passed by ninety percent in the city of Belmont.
I think the city of San Mateo, editor I mentioned, I think this passed probably two or three years ago, they approached it from a flood control protection approach. So, most of this funds is for the cleanliness of the water, not so much the flood protection. And so, I believe you're right, that it tends to hit home more when you just had a major storm, and you've had sort of devastation in your community, that people will see that there's a benefit. That's more tied to the flood control, as opposed to the clean element of the water. So, I do think that that is a very good point, that probably pushed the San Mateo one recently over because of that element, because they had a storm. I think this was probably the storm of twenty-three, so my guess is it was that year.
And I just have a follow-up question to that. Chris, does this ever come up in monthly meetings with other city managers and assistant city managers? Is there any discussion about uniting and... No, okay.
I would say this is before Chris's time, when Brett and I believe Adam were involved. There was still some ongoing discussions that essentially kind of came to a conclusion, maybe the summer last year, so a little before when Chris came on board. So, there were discussions at the PMA, which is the Public City Managers Association, and how to pursue it. And then, basically, I believe, as a group, they decided to table it.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, so, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. It reads, "When the program was originally established in nineteen ninety-three, the rate cap for the current parcel fee in Clayton was set by the city council at twenty-nine dollars per ERU." So, the council set it. So, explain to me again, how come we couldn't set it at a higher rate now if we wanted to? We could.
Yes, you absolutely can.
But it doesn't seem palatable in the county, and we're benefiting from it being part of the county?
Also, the cap was created, and you don't have a CPI index associated with this particular tax. Prop two-eighteen passed since that time. So, essentially, any increase beyond, and even in this case, there was no CPI approved with it, any rate increase has to go back to the voters. So, the city council could make that decision to, and we're going to talk about that with the GAD in maybe about twenty, thirty minutes.
No, I think, I think Councilmember Tillman's question is, if we set it at twenty-nine in nineteen ninety-three, why can't we not set it higher now? And I think the answer is because the law has changed in nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment on this? No, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. So, are we keeping this on the consent calendar? Yeah, okay. Super. Okay, then I'm going to close item number five. Move on to item number six, recognition.
I would move approval of items five A and C.
Oh, and the whole consent calendar.
Second. Or did you already second?
I did not.
So, that's a motion?
On items A and C, because we have tabled item B.
And do I have a second?
I thought Jim just did, but if he didn't, then I will.
And I second.
Okay. Thank you, so we'll take a roll call.
On that motion, Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Ania?
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Mayor Trepiana?
Yes.
Thank you, five ayes.
Thank you. All righty. Moving on to item number six, there are no recognitions and presentations this evening. Moving on to reports, city manager and staff.
Hang on one second, let me pull it up. All right, I have a few updates for everyone this evening. The recruitment for the full, four full-time vacant positions closed last week. Combined, those four positions, we received well over two hundred applications. You can imagine it's going to take a little bit of time to pull through all of those applications, so we're going to divide and conquer amongst the staff. We are currently doing that, and the first round of interviews will be held next week, is our plan for the first position, which is management analyst, which we did receive about a hundred applications. So, good news there. Two weeks ago, I attended the League of California Cities Conference, which was great. Attended some really good sessions, networking with other city managers in other cities, commiserating together over the challenges we all face, much like we just heard there. And then, an opportunity to meet some companies that provide services to cities. You know, as small cities, we use companies like Fourleaf and CSG and some others to accomplish our work, so it was great to meet some new people from some new companies. Part of that was talking about the good governance training, that we set an ad hoc up two weeks ago. I've received one proposal already. I expect to get a couple more in the next couple of weeks. I'm also, I've reached out to the League of California Cities to see what they offer, if they have any avenues or trainers that they recommend. So, trying to go through a multitude of avenues to move that forward, and then we'll set a meeting for the ad hoc to get together to start talking about those points of emphasis for that training. Couple other things coming up next Monday, the twenty-fourth, community-sponsored special events will be here, Hoyer Hall, at four PM. We will have, hopefully, the final, everything set, bands and schedule, so looking forward to that meeting. And then, the next night, Tuesday, we'll be planning commission here at Hoyer Hall, and that meeting starts at seven o'clock. There'll be one item on that agenda. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Chris. And I just have a comment on item seven B. I just want to remind my fellow council members that the nature of the council reports is to be reporting out on committee information, results of committee meetings locally and regionally. It's not for future agenda items, of which we have a process, and it's also not to comment on comments made at a previous meeting by the public. So, let's try to keep our reports to reporting out on city business and city committee meetings, okay? Thank you. And I am then going to move on to item number eight, which is public hearings, of which there are none. We are going to move on to our one action item, and this will be our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is a discussion about the recruitment for the police chief. This item was taken to budget an audit earlier this month. In an effort to attract and retain a police chief, we are looking at enhancing what the salary could be. Attached to your packet is a salary study of other chiefs in smaller cities within Contra Costa, and then expand it out for some smaller jurisdictions, more of our size, not in Contra Costa. in Contra Costa County. The prior chief with his departure was due a 4% COLA increase June of this year, so my request was to build that 4% into the base salary. The reason I'd like to do this now is so we are preparing the brochure for the recruitment of the new chief and we want to be accurate in what the base salary will be as we advertise. And then the incoming chief will receive a contract and there will be some negotiable items in there. How long the contract is, those COLA increases, and also certificate pay and possible longevity pay. So there's a few variables that could enhance this salary moving forward when we get into that selection piece and negotiating with who the next chief may be. The 4% basically takes the range from a low of 141,000 and a high of 173 and raises it to a low of 146, up to just under $180,000. And then, as I mentioned, there are the other things within the contract that can push that number a little bit higher. But for the discussion this evening, it's the base salary as listed in the staff report and allowing us to change the salary schedule to reflect those changes. With that, I'm happy to entertain any questions?
Yep, I have a couple. First of all, some comments. Our chief sits in a group meeting with all of the other chiefs of police in Contra Costa County. And you see several of them here listed. They're not all there, but there's a good representation. And the one thing that strikes me more than anything else is the fact that our chief proposed salary is way below what I would think would be acceptable. And you can see that El Cerrito, Hercules, Pleasant Hill, Pinole, and I don't know what the sheriff pays their designated person for, for example, San Ramon and Danville, and I think there's one other city that has a sheriff in charge of their policing. But my point is, we're now, as you have suggested, getting into the business of recruitment for a new chief of police. And I know that the Budget and Audit Committee did a good job of analyzing him, but I think, in my personal opinion, I think that person that we bring in isn't going to come in at step five or, is that correct? They will come in at some, somewhere between one and five.
Yeah, I couldn't answer that right now. Depending on their experience and looking comparatively to what they're making currently, what that difference might be.
Okay, where I'm headed on that is that personally, I'd like to see us push that top end up further, closer to 200,000. Don't know how we fund it at this point. And the reason why I brought up the salary that we would pay an incoming chief of police, even if we brought them in at step three, let me get to that, step three or step four, they would not be getting the high end that we would raise, in my view, the salary to. But I think for perception purposes and for recruitment purposes specifically, we need to move that top end up. We wouldn't have to pay them, but what I, I'm viewing it as it would give us some flexibility and time to review potential funding sources that could somehow fund that chief's job up until the, up to the $200,000 annual rate. I mean, the only one, and it's missing on here, is the chief for the Community College District. That's the one that's most comparable to ours. And it, in fact, one of our past chiefs left that job and took ours and stayed with us for five years. But I would like to see us take another look at this and somehow get that top step into closer to 200,000, if not at 200,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And Chris, could you just remind us, our last permanent police chief was at 173?
Yeah, he was at top step with a 3% longevity on top of that and a 5% advanced certificate from post.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to open this up for public comment. Does anyone have any public comment on this agenda item? No? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council discussion.
I would love if we could compensate our, all of our staff a lot more, but I think typically, as we discussed at one of our other budget sessions, when we do budget, you're always budgeting at the top step. So, because you have the opportunity then to bring in people at the top step. And so if we were to raise it, you know, a significant amount beyond what we're talking about here, it would, you know, it would, it would be difficult to fund. Like you would need to, you would need to cut in some other area. And given we're just now in the recruitment process, I think the feedback that we gave staff was if we keep this increase consistent with what we were expecting prior, then we can go through the recruitment and view the candidates. And if we're able to get candidates, which you never know, but I would be hopeful, then that would be great. If we're unable to get candidates because of whatever reason, then we would have to revisit. But I, I would hesitate to go anything further than what we have here because it is, it would be consistent with what we've already budgeted. So that'd be.
And you're comfortable with that analysis?
Yes, I am. It is specifically to be consistent, so our prior chief, who recently left, had a contract for, a multi-year contract that called for 4% increases.
Right.
Each year. So because he's not here, that increase isn't happening. So what this does is it takes what would have happened and raises the scale for the role, consistent with what we had planned on prior to him leaving. And so it's kind of like, it's not neutral, that's the wrong way to describe it, because it obviously is an increase, but it, it follows along the same pathway that we were expecting. And then they'll do a recruitment and it'll, we'll get whatever candidates we get from that and evaluate the fit of the candidates that apply to see if it makes sense. If it doesn't, and we get no candidates that are, that, you know, that our city manager is open to, then we'd have to revisit. And he would come back to us probably and say that there were no qualified candidates and we need to take some action.
Correct.
Or that we have qualified candidates who want more money.
That's also a possibility.
That's another possibility. And we haven't seen anything yet because the development of the recruitment vehicle is still under development. And I just think there's got to be a way, and I don't know, we need, long-term, we need to get that position, higher compensation, so that they're within their peer group in Contra Costa County. And, I mean, I can't believe San Pablo's paying them $300,000 a year. That's, that's way out of the ballpark from my perspective, but if there was some way, and I'm.
But then you have to be in San Pablo.
What's that?
I mean, Clayton is not San Pablo, so.
I didn't, I know that. They have a big casino there that chunks a lot of money into their coffers every year. So I understand the difference between those cities. But anyhow, I just want to go on record that I would favor increasing it. I know we aren't going to be able to do that tonight, but I want to go on record saying that in order for potential candidates to come into our community, that we need to have them at parity with their counterparts in other cities in Contra Costa County. Thank you.
I would concur with Councilmember Diaz. Because as I'm looking at these figures, our, our high is still well beyond the lows of the other cities that are in Contra Costa County, and I get they're not Clayton, I understand, that I'd almost be inclined, if we were going to do two back-to-back years of 4% increases and we're going to do the 4% now, to make it an 8% increase now and revisit what we want to do when we do our budget for the next fiscal year. That way, we can at least get a little bit closer to where Jim is trying to get the level. And Jim, you're not right, we can actually change our mind tonight and come up with some new numbers. I would like them closer as well, and I know that when we did the analysis for the police officers, that we realized clearly they're all being underpaid. We know that we need to pay them more, and I think this is our opportunity to make this right, to at least widen the bands. Because I think it is troubling to me that our low, I mean, our high is below the low for other cities. That's my two cents. I would like to increase it, I'm agreeing with you, Jim.
And by the way, one final comment that just dawned on me. Any one of our officers, if they left and went to work for our sister city in Concord, most likely they would make more money than the chief of police here in Clayton. Thank you.
Well, the other, I guess, question, comment I have too, is there are other things that could potentially be in this chief of police package as well, right? We have not finalized the job description, right? It's not posted anywhere yet. We don't have a fully baked compensation package, so there are other things that we could be putting in there, certification.
Yeah, and the standard things that are in, I would say 90% of police chief agreements or executive MOUs, however the city does it, you're going to see the executive post certificate typically at 5%. Some will also give the lower management certificate, 2% or 3%. You'll see longevity, and that's done one of two ways, longevity here in the city you're working for, or longevity in management throughout your police career. So if you've been in a management position, you've been a commander or a lieutenant elsewhere for 15 years, that counts towards longevity. So there's a variety of ways to come up with what that final number is. That it doesn't have to be solely on base because those percentages, and that's also, and I'm not trying to change your minder, but as that base goes up and you add that 5% post certificate pay, that number goes up too. So it's kind of this balance of raising the base, but we also want to be able to provide incentives and how we do that.
Correct. And we did talk about longevity pay at the Budget and Audit Committee meeting. I believe Chief McEachin did have longevity pay, so that is something that could potentially, if we want to include that.
And his longevity was tied to Clayton only because of his years prior to his departure than coming back.
I guess finally, I'm willing to support the recommendation of the Budget and Finance and Budget Committee. However, it'll be interesting to see when the recruitment process opens up, what level of candidates come to Clayton. Anyway, thank you.
Agreed. Nothing? Okay. So I guess you need, oh, public comment, sorry, folks.
You already asked.
No, I did that already.
You already did it, then you brought it back.
Oh, my gosh. I brought it back, we are getting ready to make a motion, correct?
Yeah, I'd move approval of it as in the packet, with the knowledge that when we get candidates, we're going to be able to evaluate it, so.
Before someone seconds it, can I just ask some clarifying questions on the dates and everything that are in here, really quick? Page 29. Now I got to get to 29. The resolution at the very bottom, salary table, June 16th, 2024, are we changing that to today?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't see this earlier, I saw it this evening. And then 31 is just the date at the top, the revision date, and then the chief of police, yellow highlight to today's date.
Yes.
Everything else was good to go. Now a second.
Okay, let's have a roll, a vote.
On that motion, Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Ania.
Yes.
Tillman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan.
Aye.
Mayor Trippiano.
Aye.
Thank you, you have five ayes.
And now, am I, I know we do have some announcements. We're going to adjourn and then go into our Geological Hazard Abatement District Board Meeting, but we do have some announcements that we'd like to close this portion of the meeting with. Councilmember Diaz.
Thank you. Our community has suffered a couple of losses since December, November till now, and I just kind of want to highlight some of the people that were very integral in working with our community in a variety of things. First one is John Boland. John passed away on November 30th, 2024, age 76. Resident of Concord, but yet he was our emcee for the Clayton Concerts in the Grove, he was our DJ at the classic car shows, he was the emcee at the Fourth of July Parade. He was a graduate in broadcasting from San Diego State University, worked at KSOW down in San Diego, moved to the Bay Area in '74, and was the Northern California Ambassador for Sony Electronics. He leaves his wife Jackie, and private services were held in January. Second one that we lost was Dan DeSousa, age 79. Passed away on January 8th, 2025, resident of Clayton. He was a talented residential designer and inventor. He invented, believe it or not, a little music holder that goes on a guitar, so the guitar player can see the music that are, the words that they're going to be singing in a particular song. Very innovative guy. He was the lead musician for The Boomers. His local band played at the Clayton Club. He used to handle, host a event called the Bud Fest in the backyard of his home over in Jeffrey Ranch, and I attended many of those. Leaves his wife Debbie. There'll be a celebration of life at the Clayton Community Church on the 5th of March at 2:00 PM, and his band, The Boomers, will be playing for that entertainment. Finally, just recently, on Sunday, the 16th of February, we lost John Melly. John, a resident of Clayton, he and his wife Jane owned and operated MB Contract Furniture in Concord. He had, their firm had sold many furniture items to the city, and we certainly appreciated what they have done. John attended Kent State University in Ohio and the University of Vermont. He leaves his wife Jane, who is the former president and, of the CBCA and co-chair of the annual barbecue. There are no services planned at this time. May they all rest in peace.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Okay, at this time, we are, what's that? Yeah, we're going to take a break. We are going to adjourn the meeting at 8:29. We're going to take a little break and then we'll come back into Geological Hazard Abatement District. Thank you for your patience.